Sorry about that, everyone.
All right. I will call the July 11, 2022 meeting in the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors to order. I will note that the board did meet in an executive session where we discussed three legal matters. Mr. Neese, you want to do the roll or do you want Ms. Zalana to do that?
I can do the roll call. Mr. Altieri.
Here.
Mr. Partridge. Here. Ms. Roberts, like cap.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Chalice.
Here.
Your solicitor, I believe your engineer is here. I can't see her, but and then your manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neese. We will now move down to the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. And the moment of silence, whatever is in your mind. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move down to item number five, the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
Motion was, excuse me, I actually should have said that we need to remove item 13.2. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda with item 13.2 removed?
So moved, second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chalice. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number six, public comment for agenda items only. I will note first that there were no public comments in the Dropbox or in the email box. If there's any members of the public who have anything that they wish to say, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. But the record reflected there are none. We'll now move down to section seven minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the June 27, 2022 meeting?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chalice, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item 8.1, the Delaware Valley Original Planning Commission's traffic calming update in place making street, street painting project, Logan Axelson and Rene Russo. I see that we have Renee here.
Mr. Perriman, if I might. Logan can get on via Zoom, but because we can't show you that, Logan's going to go ahead and do the presentation without us being able to show the presentation. So just that hopefully you have, people have seen that and it is attached to the agenda if somebody wants to go back and see it.
So is Logan on the call right now, Mr. Neese?
I am.
Logan, you're gonna try to speak and I'm gonna see if they can hear you.
Okay, I am speaking now. Can anyone hear me?
I'm not even hearing him.
Okay.
Are you hearing Logan?
We are not. So do we want to push this off to next?
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're gonna have to push it off until the next meeting when we get the technology situation straightened out.
Do we want George to give his part of the presentation?
If I, if you don't mind, I'd like for George to at least talk about that so you know where the traffic tables are. And you know, and then we'll just move forward and then we'll hit this at the meeting in August.
I think that's probably a good idea. Renee, sorry about that. Yeah, we'll make sure the technology is up and running before you make the trek again. Yeah, Mr. Sharitz.
George, George Sharitz, Director of Public Works. Just one piece with regard to the circle. We have painted the island that we shared we were gonna do the last time, the southern island heading toward Westchester Pike. So it is a, it is a shade of green. It is not bright green. When we went to go get the paint, the traffic paint, apparently there is a shortage of traffic paint. We weren't gonna get it for a number of weeks and we looked at a number of places. So we had to mix it with paint that we had, traffic paint. So that's why it looks more like a mid-August shade of green than, than a lush green like we would have liked. But it gives a very good concept of what could be done with the space and the amount of space there. So if you haven't seen it yet, I would encourage you to go look at that. One of the things that I know was being done around the circle was looking at traffic calming in a number of areas. And the chief of police and I have looked at some sections along roads avenue where traffic calming measures could be put into place. I know that was a concern that was brought in to the township as well as looking at it from the circle standpoint. So we do have two locations that we could put a speed tables along roads avenue. There is a stop sign at one point along there. So that actually creates three opportunities to slow the traffic down. There is another place on Ashley Road, right? If you come off of roads and you would make a right on Ashley, and I know they had sent in a petition about traffic calming. So there is that. There is previously winding way, which is also part of the general area, had expressed interest in traffic calming. The chief and I have looked in that area. It's, it's very difficult to put a speed table there because of the fact, one, it's very winding and two, the grade of the road there. But there is one area, the chief is looking back at his history now to see what his traffic counts and what the speeds were through there over the last couple of years. We'll bring that back to you, but we are ready to move forward with that sometime in August if it's something that you would like us to do. And again, we currently have the speed tables set up on Sawmill Avenue, Sawmill Road and on Ellis. And the ones on Sawmill would be the ones coming up and getting moved.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sharitz. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Sharitz? Any questions from the public? Saying no, we'll now move down to reports, reports from the township manager, Mr. Neese.
Yeah, so I just have a couple of quick things for you. First of all, we once again have gotten the budget award for 2020, well, not for again for 2022, but we got the budget award for our 2022 budget, which is now the third year in a row that we've gotten that award. We are gonna be doing a presentation hopefully at the August meeting, but I just wanted to let the board know and the public know that we've actually awarded, we've actually received that award. Secondly, on Westchester Pike, phases four and five, there have been a couple of questions about that. And one of those was regards to some ballards being put up at along where the Casey Shopping Center is. I've taken a look at that. I'm not overly comfortable with that and I'm gonna make some suggestions back to the traffic planner who's doing that and see if we can't come up with something else for that project in that area. And I will come back to you on that. The other piece that I just would make known, so some folks have asked about where that part of the project is actually taking place. So it's gonna be taking three lanes going westbound from Bryn Mawr Avenue up through, it currently starts three lanes just once you get past the St., they just pass St. Albans Avenue, it'll be, so for Bryn Mawr Avenue up past St. Albans Avenue, and then going eastbound on that side from the shopping center, when you come out of the Acme Shopping Center down to Bryn Mawr Avenue, will be three lanes going that direction. On the, what's phase five, which is on the other end down by Boot Road. So going from Ellis Avenue, so coming out the township building and making a left on Westchester Pike will be three lanes going down to Boot Road and then coming eastbound will be from Boot Road coming into that same area. So those, that's the project is supposed to begin again in the spring of 2023, but they're finalizing everything with Penn Dot right now and Penn Dot's getting everything ready so it can go out to bid. And one of those is this issue along where the Casey's is at Shopping Center. And so I'll get back to you and have some, hopefully some, something better than just yellow or orange ballers sitting there right along Route 3, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Neese. Does any members of the board have any questions? Is that all, Mr. Neese?
That's it.
Thank you very much. We'll now move down to 10.1 fund transfer. Can I get a motion to approve the transfer of $1,162,678 from the general fund to the capital fund? This amount represents the excess of revenue over expenditures for the 2021 fiscal year. Motion is made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Chalice. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section 11, 11.1, payments. Can I get a motion to approve the 80% tuition reimbursement for spring and summer semester classes at Westchester University of Controlman Daniel Strathie? As per the collective bargaining agreement totaling $2,476.80. Motion is made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chalice. Is there any other board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 11.2. Can I get a motion approving pay request number one from Eagle Contracting Inc. for the Green Valley Road and Township Building storm sewer replacement totaling $83,084, leaving a balance of $79,466? Motion is made by Supervisor Chalice, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion?
I have a question. Giovanna, is that?
Turn that mic tone on.
Giovanna, is that the finished pavement job that I see out there?
No, that is a temporary patching. They let that sit for 30 days to make sure everything settles out and then they will come back in and do a final paving restoration.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 11.3, can I get a motion to approve the $1,980.25 escrow release payment to Jim McQually at 15 Chilts Lane for a completed planning project? Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Russo. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 11.4, can I get a motion approving the $1,031.25 escrow release payment to Keystone Custom Dex LLC for a completed grading project at 3908 Whitestone Road? Motion is made by Supervisor Chalice, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 11.5, can I get a motion approving the $98 escrow release payment to Mark Lange, Lange? Lange, that's, whoa, that was a rough one. At 26 Sugar Maple Drive for a completed grading project. Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 11.6, can I get a motion approving the $4,395 escrow release payment to Newtown Square Presbyterian Church at 3,600 Goshen Road for a completed planning project? Motion is made by Supervisor Chalice, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 11.7, can I get a motion approving the $100 permit review refund to go properties for a project at 6 Marine Briar Lane where a duplicate permit was submitted? Motion is made by Supervisor Chalice, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section 12 bills, I will make a motion to approve the bills on check registered A dated July 11, 2022 totaling $205,466.56. Motion is made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any other board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section 13, new business, 13.1, can I get a motion approving the advertisement for bids associated with the Northwood Drainage Improvement Project? Motion is made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Chalice. Mr. Neese, do you have anything you want to add to this?
I just would make note on, on this one. As we, as we move forward, there there is a possibility, depending on where the bids come in, we might we might need a, we might be in a position where the funding will not be enough because we're using the CARES Act funding to do this or the ARCA funding, I'm sorry. And so just, just as we're going out, we'll have to examine that, but just know that as we go forward.
Any other questions for Mr. Neese? All right, thank you, Mr. Neese. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. As we said, 13.2 has been removed. 13.3, consider approving the proposal for Ellis sidewalk installation from Nicole Klein, McMahon and Associates at a cost of 126,000, excuse me, $127,692. Motion is made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chalice. Mr. Neese, do you want to add anything to this?
Yeah, just so, just so everybody makes sure they understand, this is for the sidewalk along Ellis Avenue that will also be looking at making the speed tables there permanent as part of that project. Probably one also being ready where the crosswalk is coming off of the trail and, you know, continuing the trail along the backside of Greer Park. And so, I mean, I'm sorry, Gable Park, not Greer Park, Gable Park. And, and then the other side of this is that we probably will look at having McMahon also look at doing all of putting into that bid redoing all of this township owned sidewalks in front of the township building as well as along Stony Brook.
And Mr. Neese, just to confirm, the sidewalk that is going to be designed for Ellis Avenue will be on the eastern side or the side where the Goddard School, is that correct?
That is the intention. Based on where the electric poles and all that are located, we think that's the easiest way to do it.
Perfect.
This is for the design or for just for the installation of the actual sidewalk?
This is just the design, I believe, right, Mr. Neese? Steven?
I'm sorry, I, I lost Mr. Russo.
Is this just for the design?
This is just for the design.
Do we have any other, do we, are these, did these, did we get another price from somebody else?
I've been trying to get one, haven't gotten one back. I can do, I can still try to get another one if you would like and we can hold off.
It's the board's pleasure.
I'd say get another.
I think we need to. It's $130,000.
All right.
I don't feel comfortable with that, just without, without having another proposal.
So that was three of them, I believe. So we'll just, Stephen, we'll just table this and hopefully we hear something for the next month.
I'll try to have something for you by August. At least another, another one.
With regards to that, just out of curiosity, our timeframe initially on this was what? This, the design phase is 30 to 60 days?
I said between 30 and 60, we were hoping to let the project this fall and see how far they could get. But, you know, if, if worse comes to worse, it'll be early sprint.
Okay.
And Stephen, when they, when we put this out, do we know what the linear, how, how big of an area we're talking about? So we can kind of compare apples to apples, you know, on a square foot or a linear foot basis?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get that information for you.
Yeah, if we can just include that, that's, it puts it a little bit into perspective, I think.
All right.
Thank you.
Steve, I mean, Rich, we don't need a motion table that, right?
I mean, you could, you could do one.
Are you more comfortable with that?
Oh, I don't care. I just, I wasn't sure if you had one hanging out.
We don't need to. Let's move on. We'll go to section 14, old business. There is no old business. We'll get down to section 15, land development approval. 15.1 will be, consider approving the preliminary final land development plan for golf learning center and patio expansion at Aronimic Golf Club as recommended with the stipulations noted in the attached action memo from the planning commission. I believe Mr. D'Amico is here as well as representatives from Aronimic.
Looks like so. Good evening. May please forward. My name is Mark D'Amico, representing Aronimic Golf Club. And with me tonight is John Cluver, who's the project architect, Brett McKay, project civil engineer from Chester Valley Engineers, and Bill Berry, who's Aronimic's current president. So I think unfortunately we don't have the TV screens working here, but I think you all are familiar with the project. But just by way of brief background, this is a phase one of what will likely be a multi-phase project. This, this project really consists of three discrete subprojects. The first is essentially a renovation of the existing golf patio. The golf patio is there now. It's a mixture of flagstone and then a wood deck. This will update, get rid of the wood part of the deck so it can terrace down, which will give, give us enhanced views of the club and it'll all be flagstone, much nicer. The second part of the project is the, on the, on the driving range, there is a proposed golf learning center. So it's basically an indoor hitting bay with some offices for the professional PGA professional staff fitting, allow you to play golf essentially indoors using golf simulators and then essentially garage doors that will open up and allow you to hit, hit balls in, in the winter time and allow our teaching professionals to teach all, all year round. And then the third part of the project is just an extension of the, of the three Ts, the three driving range Ts that will extend it a little further to allow more places to hit golf balls, which essentially will replace the area that, that we're losing for the golf learning center. So the, that plan was submitted, I think I gave this board a preview last, last fall. The, the plan was submitted to the township in April. It has been reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission. They've recommended approval. It has been reviewed by the Township Planning Commission on two occasions, most recently on last month on June 23. And the Planning Commission also recommended approval. It has been reviewed twice by the township engineer, by the fire marshal and by the township arborist. Essentially in a position where we have minor comments left and they're all, will comply. We will need a NPDS permit because we're disturbing more than one acre. So that will take a couple more months. But the, the overall or project timeline would be to try to get that approval and then finish the land development approval, finish the plan, submit the cost estimate, get the plans recorded, get that NPDS permit all by October or so that would allow the club to start construction of those discrete projects in November, essentially when the club starts to get a little more quiet. We have met with the neighbors when we went to the first planning commission in May. One of the neighbors on Tim, I think it's Timber Lane, which is the closest, can't really see it, but it's down there off the, off the first hole and off the side of the driving range. So we arranged and met with probably seven or eight neighbors came up and we walked them around, showed them Brett was there, got the plans out, answered all their questions. As I'm sure you know, that under the SADA, the township notified the neighbors. So when we came back to the planning commission last month in June, there were a couple of neighbors that came out, had a couple of questions. We went through their questions, got, gave them answers. So we feel comfortable that all the neighbors have had a chance to ask questions and I think it's fair to say that we've satisfied them with their, with our answers. And I think that's about it. We initially talked about the, the concept of needing conditional use approval for some steep slope steep slope improvements, but it turns out there's actually no improvements in the steep slope. There's a little bit of minor grading in the steep slope, but that is permitted under the subdivision and land development ordinance. So we withdrew that request. So it's a straight preliminary final land development approval. And as I said, we've got the, both the, the engineer and the architect here. So if you have any technical questions, I'm hoping we have answers for you.
Just two. The first one is you are seeking two waivers, right? One is to have it come in as preliminary final. The other one is something that has to do with plantings. Am I correct on that?
It's actually three waivers, which is in the ordinance. So it's the, right, it's preliminary final, which requires a waiver, building planning is beyond 20 feet. It's basically all around the building is hitting areas. So we can't put the plantings, but we have 300 acres. So we've confident we've got plenty of room for the plantings. And then finally, there's a technical SADA waiver with regard to the, the construction material for the underground stormwater pipe.
And the concerns that were raised from the residents in Timber Lane, which clearly seem to have been addressed because there's not many here. Is there a way that you can kind of just summarize? Was there a consistent theme or did each individual property owner have their own concerns or is it just, just not understanding what the project was?
I think the theme was right, understanding what the project was and where is this building? I just heard about this, so I came up, tell me about it. Couple of people asked about the shooting range, which has nothing to do with this, but there were new neighbors. So we walked them over to the, to the trap area and showed them where that occurs. Janet Elliott, the one neighbor, had a couple of questions about, you know, exactly where the cart path was gonna go and how, you know, whether there were some trees that had fallen down on the hill and whether she could call the club to try to work with the club to get those taken care of. So we gave her the contact information for the golf course superintendent, John Goslin. And that was, that was pretty much it. I think people were this project, particularly the golf learning center I'm talking about now is no less than 400 to 500 feet from the nearest neighbor. And I think once people understood that, the second planning commission meeting, for example, there were some neighbors from the other side of the driving range. They're, you know, 1,000 feet away, but they had no idea where this was gonna be, so.
Understood. Is there any questions? Do you have any more of your presentation?
I, I do not. We, in lieu of making a presentation, we just have our professionals here figuring if you have questions, we didn't want to take up more of your time than necessary.
Do any members of the board, we'll do the board first and then we'll move it over. Any members of the board have any questions?
I just want to know, is this new area going off the back patio towards Timber Lane?
So the golf patio is, is, is not anywhere near Timber Lane. It's up, connected to the main clubhouse. The, the project that is closest to Timber Lane is the golf learning center. So that is a proposed new structure that would be on the, on the end of the range and I've got a plan here.
So is it going near hole, is it going closest to hole one? Is towards Mr. Blue's house?
This is the driving range, right? This is the first hole here.
Yep.
This is Timber. On this run, this is Timber Lane.
Yep, and where's, where's?
Build-out learning center will be here on the corner of the driving range.
How tall is it?
So. John? 35 feet.
Are you gonna see it over the trees? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Secord, do you have anything you want to add?
No, sir.
Ms. Iacona, do you have anything you want to add? Do any members of the public have any questions or comments that they want to provide? All right. Mr. Neese, you have nothing else to add?
Nothing.
All right. Is there a motion? Motion was made by Supervisor Chalice, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap to approve resolution 2022-27 Aronimic Land Development Approval, Supervisor Chalice.
Resolution number 2022-27 preliminary slash final land development approval, Aronimic Golf Club, Golf Learning Center and Golf Patio with the following terms and conditions. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township hereby resolves and conditionally approves, one, the preliminary slash final plans, two, the following waivers and or partial waivers, which must, must be set forth on the final recorded plans as follows. A, section 148-43, point B4, to allow the use of high-density polyethylene piping in place of RCP in a stormwater conveying system, except as required by the township engineer. B, section 148-12A, to allow submission of a combined preliminary final plan. C, 104-14B, to allow some of the new required plantings that would otherwise be within 20 feet of the building to be provided for in other locations consistent with the plan. Three, such approval is subject to developer obtaining approval from the Newtown Township Municipal Authority for sanitary sewer connection and or design if required. Four, such approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the aforementioned township engineer review letter dated June 20, 2022, and fire marshal's letter of June 18, 2022, township arborist review letter of June 23, 2022, and the statements and representations set forth in the June 15, 2022 response letter of Chester Valley Engineers and any representations made by developer or Chester Valley Engineers on their behalf at the Newtown Township Public Meeting on July 11, 2022. Five, such approval is also subject to the terms and conditions outlined below, which have been agreed to between the developer and the township and which shall be reflected on the final reported plans as approved by the township engineer. Should any of the terms and conditions outlined below Should any of the terms and conditions outlined below conflict with those outlined in the letters referenced in paragraph four above, the terms and conditions below shall govern. A, the developer will execute a stormwater management and maintenance agreement and contribute to the township stormwater management maintenance fund. B, total disturbance shall not exceed one acre unless an NPDES permit is obtained. C, developer shall enter into a developers and financial security agreement with township to be prepared by the township solicitor and provide finally financial security per state law, township ordinance and the agreements. Six, except as otherwise set forth herein, developer shall comply in all respects with all applicable township codes, ordinances and regulations as well as any applicable county, state or federal regulations and developer must obtain all applicable township, state, county and federal permits, approvals and or waivers. Seven, preliminary slash final approval is contingent upon payment of all outstanding professional fees, escrow replenishment within forty-five days of approval except as properly challenged in accordance with the municipality's planning code. Nine, I guess we're missing eight, nine, the township manager is authorized to execute developers agreement, financial security agreement and stormwater man- uh, stormwater agreement when prepared in a form acceptable to the township solicitor, township engineer and township manager without further action of the board, resolved this eleventh day of July twenty twenty-two at a public meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
The motion was made and seconded. Is there, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. D'Amico. And I can tell you that the, the board up here uh could really use some golf lessons at that new facility. We'll, we'll hit anything uh except for the fairway. Uh, with that being said, we'll now move down to section seventeen, board comment. Is there any board comment? I will move down to section eighteen, public comment. Is there anyone from the public who has a public comment? The record reflect none. Items for the next agenda?
All right, I'd like to ask Mr. Neese to have Andy get a list of all the subcontractors working at Rockwell and at High Construction and make sure we're getting all the fees from them. There's a gazillion people over there and I guarantee we're not getting half the people to sign up for contractors licenses. So I'd like to see them produce a list and have John make sure that happens, so we have a list of the subs for Rockwell, the subs for High, and that they're getting their licenses. There's, there's hundreds of people over there. There's no way we're getting everybody to sign up.
I just, I just want to confirm, I think what I heard Mr. Russo ask was for a list of all the subs that are over at basically phase two of the Ellis Preserve project and uh making sure that we have all of them, uh, and we have all their contracts.
I want to make, yes, I want to make sure Andy gets a list or, or you get the list from John from both, for both Rockwell and High Construction. The apartments of all the work that's going on over there, I want a list of all the subcontractors to make sure that they're all current on their licensing because I guarantee we're missing probably two thirds to three quarters of them. There's, there's hundreds of people over there on a daily basis and I'm sure none of them are coming over here to do it.
Okay, got it.
Any other board comment? All right. We already said no public comment. Items for the next agenda, I will make a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone. See you in August.